The meeting board of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Beano Vista. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy?
Here.
Trustee Eckstein?
Here.
Trustee Fay?
Here.
Trustee Nyberg?
Here.
Trustee Rowe?
Here.
Trustee Swisher?
Here.
Trustee Paul?
Thank you all. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Behind us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I ask to please silence or turn off your cell phones. Before you have the agenda, item is to the adoption of the agenda. Any changes in the agenda? Hearing none, I would obtain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second?
Second trustee Nyberg. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments in the consent agenda? I would like to.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the, which one's it? Resolution 28. It was mentioned in the airport report later, but Mark, whose term is ending. Mark, I don't know how to spread this.
Good honest.
He's moving away, but he's still going to be an alternate member? Is that normal protocol to be an alternate member if he's not here?
Transitioning. He's not fully moved away. It's anticipated that he will be by the end of the year, and that's when his term ends.
Okay.
So.
That makes more sense.
He'll be available for some meetings, but during a transition, he may miss some meetings. That's why they're moving him to an alternate.
Okay.
Moving somebody up.
Okay. Well, that makes more sense. I thought he was like gone.
No, 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 not yet.
Okay, cool.
Very good question.
Good question.
Thank you, Devon.
One comment?
Yes.
On the clerk's report of business licenses, the new licenses issued. I just was quickly looking at those, and I think seven or eight of them are short-term rentals applying for new licenses.
And a lot from out of the county, too. I noticed that as well.
Seven. Any other questions or comments? And then, of course, the chip seal, and that falls under our cap.
It does. Well, it fits within budget.
Yes.
If you would like to do a roll call vote for the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Then that would allow for that item. We included it because it was within budget. We discussed it a bit, and I think Sean put together a pretty fantastic report, but he's available to discuss. Board has any questions, you can move it to a business item. If you would like, but I felt like his staff report was pretty explanatory.
So if there are no other questions or comments on consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a question. Second.
Second trustee Swisher, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Here, yes.
I was ready.
Next item is public comment. And I remind anybody that they can click into the chat box, and we will recognize them. Also, you can dial in on your cellphone, and you can press star nine, and the host will prompt you to unmute when it is your turn to speak. I'm looking. Mike, do you see anybody?
I do not see anyone in chat or with a hand raised.
There's also the raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen.
I see a hand. You see a hand?
We have a Carly.
You can handle it, Mike?
I can.
Okay.
Okay, Carly, we'll recognize you. If you would, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to make a comment.
What?
Mike's gonna allow.
Hold on one second. I'm running into difficulties here.
Oh.
I may not have the ability to allow to.
I did it.
Okay.
Carly, we can hear you now. Can you speak?
Okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out how to turn it on.
We got you. We can hear you. Okay, Carly, if you would, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to make your comment.
Yes, I just had a question. Carly Linky, 32709 Columbia Ranch.
If you're speaking, Carly, we lost you.
I think she said just a second.
If I didn't.
Oh, did she?
If I didn't.
That's that.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. I don't know if you heard my address. Carly Linky, 32709 Columbia Ranch, Rowan, Beano Vista. I just had a question about whether or not the sign ordinance for political signs and flags has been decided upon. I haven't been able to find it anywhere. Last I heard, it was directed to the P and Z, and then it was going to come back to the town council. Can you tell me where that's?
Okay, I'll let town administrator comment on that.
Yeah, so Carly, you're correct. Per our code, it needs to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission first before it comes back to the Board of Trustees. And I believe that's been advertised for July 7th at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'll ask Mark Doring to please confirm that.
You're correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carly. Do we see anybody else? I do not. Do you see anyone else?
Do not see anything else, no.
Okay, I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Administrator?
Yes, good evening, mayor and trustees. For some reason, I'm deciding to operate to computers this evening. My apologies. Let me get my report up. Page 23 of your packet. And yeah, you'll see in my report, I decided to write a little update there. Just felt compelled to recognize our staff and what I have the privilege to see from a day-to-day basis. So yeah, I'll read it real quick, just for those that may not be able to see it. I want to recognize our amazing staff for all the great work and accomplishments so far in 2021. The new edginess, whether that be from COVID, from growth, from political things going on way beyond our control, or any number of things going on with the world right now. It seems to be more prevalent, and our staff often absorbs that negativity. This group shows a lot of grit and perseverance, so that burden may not be visible to people outside of the staff. But I see it up close, and I feel the responsibility to call this out to our board and the public. Also, a huge thank you to the volunteers that continue to step onto the playing field, or I put this in there for Joel as a soccer player, the pitch, with us to make a difference for the community. Finally, to those that still believe in humility and kindness, thank you for sharing the words of encouragement, the tasty food, the positive outlook, and the helping hand. Yeah, I appreciate it. Let me read that. It just, you know, things build up, and I wanted to express that appreciation for our staff and just kind of call out that it's a tough area to be in right now. And so they hide it well in a lot of instances, but it's a tough time sometimes. So thank you to staff. Great job, everybody. Moving on to other parts of my report, quickly, the Chafie Rec Plan that the board had discussed last meeting and directed staff to present a letter politely requesting an extension of the public comment period that was received. They did immediately open up the public comment portion for the rec plan that day or the very next morning, and that comment period was open through the 20th. So they did accommodate, I think, the town's request very well, and they will be back at the next meeting on July 13th. That's the plan to present that revised version of the plan and take, you know, take conversation then and ultimately look for endorsement from the town. So I'm pleased with how they responded, and I think they have done a fantastic job of working with the public and taking those comments into their plan. So look forward to that next meeting. The new police station facility project. Excited to say this isn't something that has fallen by the wayside, given all the other things going on. We've started, Michelle, Dean, and myself have started talking about the funding stack for that, and we're very excited to see where that's headed. We will have a work session on July 27th with the board, and we will have representatives from Stifle Financial, who interestingly enough are working with the county on their expansion of EMS and the sheriff's office up here up north, as well as some facilities down south, as well as Salida schools. So a company that's working locally in multiple ways. They'll be here, and then Christie Dune from Dole will join us as well, because they will be a partner, will be looking for to help with grant funding towards that project. So work session on the 27th. We will present what that funding stack looks like. Make sure you're comfortable with that approach. And then ultimately, I'll be gauging the board's interest with trying to move forward with an RFP this fall to see if we can find a design firm to partner with so that we can get moving on this and hopefully have a building project lined up for 2022. So look forward to that. Our Rescue Plan Act, our ARP funding is on its way. It's working its way towards us. Michelle did a great job getting that submitted through Dole. We do expect a deposit of $360,000 tomorrow for our first distribution towards that. Again, that's relief funding that's spread out over the next few years. We have until the end of 2024 to spend those funds. Across the county, I think the leadership teams are talking about collaborating at least a little bit on how to approach that funding. It seems that we are seeing more flexibility coming on how the town could approach those funds, possibly using from things like, you know, replacing revenues, but going into other needs, possible housing projects, things like that. So there's some potential there that I think we need to be patient and probably collaborate with our partners in the county to see where we might be able to tie our funds together. But looking forward to that. Our... I'm going to skip the next topic real quick and jump to a little one that's a little bit easier. The board meeting setup, which tonight you'll see, we did a dry run of trying to configure the room to be open, have the doors open to in-person with the public. There's plenty of space in here to work with. I think it's set up very nicely. So kudos to the staff for working on something here. We like keeping the Zoom option for the public, but we recognize that some people want to interact in person and that we will have some public hearings and things like that that work better in public as well. So staff's proposal is, I think we're ready. And if the board is ready as well, we can set up the next meeting and advertise it as completely open with the option to continue to utilize Zoom. So I'll pause there. Any thoughts on the meeting setup for next meeting? Does that sound like a plan or no?
I think that sounds great.
Okay, all right. I'm saying head nods, thumbs up. Great. We'll proceed in that direction. Finally, in my tour, I brought up something that's happening in several other, I'll say some, other Colorado municipalities, and that is having a declaration, a local disaster emergency declaration regarding workforce housing. And we've talked about this at the administrator level. We've heard of some others doing it. So a little bit of brainstorming on why and what this would allow. And so I put a little bit of that in there. The latest one was Crested Butte, and I know some of you did see the news on that. And I did have a conversation or a touch point with their town administrator, Dara, who used to be in Salida. So we have a relationship there. She did clarify a lot of, I think, some of the assumptions that came with, here's what they're doing, and here's what it allows, not necessarily what was initially expressed. But the concept really is, and this kind of ties back to, I think, what Jeff would reiterate, the point of a local disaster emergency declaration is that it allows the board to empower the town administrator or to take action themselves to temporarily do some things. So you think about with our COVID emergency declaration, we were able to create a temporary expansion of premise for liquor licensing and seating and things like that. It's not built into our code. So if you think of it in terms of housing, there are some possibilities that we could explore. And I haven't fully boiled that out yet or done anything with that, because I want the board's direction before we go spend time on that. But it could do some things like there's the concept of utilizing a hotel space for actual housing. I think there's codes in the fire code, building code, that prevent that in a lot of ways because of mainly fire code issues. We could look at doing those types of things and putting a temporary exclusion, if you will, on pieces of the code that would allow us to take short-term actions related to housing. So that's at a very, very high level concept. You know, welcome at the mayor's direction, if that's something you all want to discuss and trustee staff or contemplate a little bit more and possibly give direction.
And let's kind of, through the meeting here, kind of put that back here, fine, and let's bring it up. Trustee staff, bounce it around a little bit. And because I think obviously we need more detail, obviously. Okay. Be a direction, if that's what we're going to do, or anticipate it. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
That's it?
Sure.
Any other questions for?
Quick one. Is Wold out of the picture for the police department?
They are not at all. They would need to respond to the RFP.
Okay.
So the county, for those, just a reminder, Wold was the consultant we use for the facility analysis. The county did select Wold as the design architect firm for their facility project up north here, off Greg Drive. Our feeling as staff is that we would like to put it back out there in an RFP and see how everybody competes. Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Philip. Town treasurer. Michelle.
Thank you, mayor, trustees. I have the URL to the transparency website and to the 2021 budget book. Sales tax for April came in at $335,000, which is 37% over 2020 and 33% over the budget. I have attached that bar graph, and we can look at that in a minute. Also, town sales tax versus remote, local versus remote. The first graph is local, and it looks like that grew 28%, and remote grew by 62%. But the sales tax itself grew too. So I'm not sure that people are spending that much more as a percentage. They are spending more based on things that are opening up, and people are starting to work again and the whole thing. Next meeting, I will be bringing forward the mid-year budget adjustment. And the second meeting in July will be the second quarter financial status report. And also, we'll be talking about the police funding proposal. I have the expenditure activity and expenditures over 2,000. And then the next page is the bar graph. So you can see how well the town is doing with sales tax so far this year. And the surplus, yeah, year-to-date budget surplus is $323,000 so far. I'll take questions at this time if you have them.
Questions from Michelle. Go ahead, Louie.
I have a couple of questions on the expenditures over 2,000.
Okay.
I'm wondering about the Front Range Research Associates of $12,574. What is that intensive survey draft report?
That's the historic survey for 30 properties as part of History Colorado Grant that we're working on with History Colorado and Front Range Research is doing that.
Great, thank you. And then the other question I had was the Core and Main Limited Partnership for $5,729 for items for inventory? What is that one?
Water fund inventory.
Oh, like water meters?
Yeah, I believe this was more like meters and valves and stuff. I don't remember exactly what that was, but it was for water.
Right, thanks. Thanks for paying for the bridge on James Street.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just an observation for obviously the 2021 March and April, or is it April and May? Tax, what do we, yep, we're in March and April, which also, it's obviously over 2020, because that's when for brick and mortars. That's when there was closures, but what's hopeful is that it's also, I think, at least one of the months is about 7% up over 2019. So I think that's a really positive outlook for the businesses that are open in town.
Yeah, I agree. And the bar graph that shows how much sales taxes actually up mirrors that, because that actually does have the 19 numbers on it. The orange bars are 2019.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Principal Planner Doring?
Thank you, mayor. My report begins on page 28. We continue to see a lot of new construction. We're at 32 units in terms of units that we permitted this year. Our planning commission continues to do a lot of work. In fact, we will be taking, we had a discussion there, planning commission meeting last time about possible changes to our code to try and address some of the housing concerns that we see in town. The planning commission, we took several proposals to them to take a look and do some analysis. So we're hoping to try and address increasing the amount of apartments in town, because we know there is a housing shortage. So we'll probably be starting that conversation in July. So our planning commission will begin that discussion, and then hopefully we'll be bringing something to you sometime after that. Additionally, our historic preservation commission did hear an application for the Chafie County Courthouse or the BV Heritage Museum. That will be coming to the board in July. So we'll have a local landmark application coming to you. The exciting news for this report, the farm has submitted an application for a site plan for 77 apartments. And it says on nine acres here, that's actually nine acres, their whole portion of the subdivision that we just did. It's actually on about 2.7 acres. So we are hoping to have 77 apartments through that site plan process before the end of the year. Additionally, we've gotten a lot of subdivisions completed and recorded. We've been working on the farm, completed that. River Run at BV, that's up on the north side of town. We completed that one. Block 30, which is the dentist's office behind you guys on the south side of Cedar. And we've also completed a public improvements agreement for Phase Eight out at Sunset Vista Four. So there's additional 27 homes that are going to be coming online soon that we will be permitting for. We are waiting on the county for the IGA. The county's been extremely busy. I know they've been handling a lot of things, but we're hoping to try and get back on track that this fall, when things hopefully calm down a little bit. We've also been working on some revitalizing Main Street grants, alley improvements to block 21, amendments to our water dedication ordinance, Chafie housing initiatives, some floodplain meetings, and we are trying to get started on GIES field collection. So we're looking at purchasing some equipment so that we can start collecting data out in the field. We've had a lot of conversations with people about projects in town, and we'll have a few more this week. So with that, I'll just say we are in the middle of summer, and we're trying to keep up. But so far, we're seeing a continued growth in development of new and renewal of things. Any questions for me?
Go ahead, Amy.
Hey, Mark, what's the CU Denver Capstone Project?
That was the project that you guys saw, the use of the area around the police station. So not only did they present it to you, but they presented it to our professor, their professors. And so we attended that to see how they did in their presentations moving forward as they go through their planning program.
And I would add on that we have had discussion with Boys and Girls Club in relation to that project as well. So they are very interested in trying to meet the town's recreation space needs on that portion of our town campus block where the annex building was represented. So we're letting them take a good shot at that and see how staff feels about it. And then that would be brought forward to the board with an updated letter of intent between the town and Boys and Girls Club if we feel like it is a good solution.
That's great.
Great. Mark, you're showing 2021 year-to-date. When is that? It shows 131.
Sorry, that should be the end of May. Sorry.
End of May, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
One quick one.
Yes.
Mark, I think as of your last report, you were hoping to be the first car over Cottonwood Pass for Labor Day or Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah, I think I failed. I think it was 20.
Yeah, I think I, I think I failed. I think it was twenty. About two minutes after the gate opened and there were some cars ahead of me.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next, it's Sean of the Quirks.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Okay, so um order's on page thirty in the packet. And as usual, we start off with the uh water production in the uh comparable years with that. You see, uh, we have a unusual large amount of unaccounted happening in May, right? Um, on the, on the far right, um, I must have got distracted when I saw that number, so I apologize. I'll get the uh Ivy League and accounted on my next report. Apologize for not having it on this month's. Um, we'll kind of get back to that, to that unaccounted, but um, so far, service line installations for twenty twenty-one are at nineteen. And as usual, uh, we're, we're sampling monthly and annually for C D P H E compliance, no issues there. And the wealthy, well-free groundwater um uh compliance sampling is, is ongoing. And that'll, that'll last through the rest of this year, or the rest of, probably in September. Um, I guess the big thing is um, the heat right now. You know, June uh water demand has been extremely high. With the high heat and the dry weather, water demand has increased to near gallery production capabilities. It probably doesn't help that we have uh high unaccounted in May, which is likely coming into June with this. So we, we are out leak detecting and we, we might have found a couple, couple areas um last weekend, this week. Pretty challenging locations, but um hopefully we can figure out what's going on with that. Um, you know, just a lot of use. We, you know, we're able to um kind of identify locations where um, where water is being used because we have meters and, and pumps in place. And we're seeing a lot of water getting pushed up to the upper zone. Um, you know, almost, you know, fifty to seventy thousand gallons higher at times than what we were at last year, which is interesting because that zone typically hasn't had a lot of impact or development. Yeah, we're also watching the school and I know they're trying to get their grass um established. And we, we gave them a pretty good leeway on that in May so that the turf would get established and their native grasses would get established. But I, you know, we're, I had a conversation with the landscape company today in, in regards to the, the native vegetation that seems to be struggling, getting established. It's competing um uh, really hard with the, with the weeds that typically like to do. But just, they're just, they just thrive here in, in this area. So uh, we're going to be cutting that water back and should be, should be helping a, a little bit. But um, gonna be interesting to see um in the next couple of days when we read meters, what the school's consumption uh, is for, 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 um, for June. Uh, yeah, for June. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, and um, just go ahead and stay with the doom and gloom on the, on the water, you know. I'm not an expert on stream flows, um, but it does look like, you know, the creeks are low and they're going to continue to keep dropping. Um, this was a chart that I put together um last Thursday. And since that time, um, the Cottonwood Creek has dropped um to the mid-twenty CFSs. So we've dropped even more, um, trying to get a hold of um the data um logger. Friend of mine that works for the Division of Water, because I'm looking at twenty twenty and it seems like we're fairly comparable to what we see on their charts. But I don't know that um, the charts are always something we should, we should just um, you know, hold to, to the truth of what we're doing. So I just wanted to reach out to that. And, and again, back to, you know, what the projections are for, for um our flows um in Cottonwood Creek. I, I think uh, you know, with right water um being, having an intimate perspective, our guys with the Division of Water and um our guys with Upper Ark, I think uh collectively, we should have a pretty strong indicator. And so uh, we'll, we'll see how it goes. Um, and we'll hope that, you know, these volunteer water restrictions have a, have an impact to, to what we're doing. It, it's just so odd. It's just, I can't um remember. It's been quite a while since we've had this, this kind of heat, especially in June. Um, engineering projects. Long-term projects are going on, um, really making some strong headway with Water Resource Master Plan. Big thanks to right water engineers and, and Joel Benson for uh, for getting that going and keeping that moving forward. Um, we wanted to do another new kickoff site meeting for, for well four. We're just trying to get a couple of things out of the way before we do it, primarily Water Resource Master Plan. Um, working with RG and their team for future uh street and stormwater designs, you know, for places like Gold, Evans, Pine Street, Belden Street, Arkansas Street, um, Vineyard Street. So um, some of those newer developments that are starting to get built on, we just want to make sure the water goes where it's supposed to go when it rains. And um, and our streets are at correct, correct elevations. I don't know if you guys saw this, this EPA Risk and Resilience Assessment application. I think we could probably all argue that uh, we're not quite at three thousand three hundred people quite yet in, in our town. But I think the, you know, the summer months and the transient population that we have kind of triggers that. And, and it's a good program, just the same. And um, not gonna, not gonna um really pull back on this. It's, it's a great thing to do for our community. It's a great thing to do for our staff. Um, and um, like I said, I, I don't think that we're quite year-round at three thousand three hundred people. But again, I guarantee you, there's more than three thousand people here, um, you know, um, right now. Um, so we'll go ahead and move forward on it. We've been, been kind of um prodded to, to move forward on this and the deadline is June thirty-first. It's, it's all but complete. We had a couple of things, financials to look at with Michelle and Philip. And other than that, the application is completed and there's going to be no problem getting it submitted by, by June thirty-first. Um, you know, I don't know if anybody researched it, but I can give you kind of a quick uh synopsis of, of what it, you know, what it, what it does. And, and it just kind of identifies the risks of the system for Malibu Naxx and natural hazards, heat waves. Uh, the resiliency of pipes and, and, and our infrastructure that's in place, physical barriers, um cross-connection programs, water collection, um, uh, water rights, um, security, uh, cyber security, um, monitoring practices and financial infrastructure. Um, and, and things like that. And um, so it's, it's really good. It helps us kind of recognize what we have in place and, and, and probably see some things that we, we could probably be working on. And um, in um the December, the Emergency Response Plan, what we do, will be due, which is also a good thing. And it'll identify how we handle emergency situations with our water uh infrastructure and distribution system. The water plant expansion project is moving along pretty good. Um, because of the early um peak runoff, it kind of set us back with evaluating um, the surface water component of the uh, uh, JBA uh RFP. Uh, but we're still working on it and we're, um, we're looking at a couple of other things that uh are likely to present some pretty cool opportunities for redundancy with our groundwater system and our surface water um as well. Um, um, the um as part of that RFP, there was a component in there for, for, for funding. And, and we're looking at the state revolving uh fund loan program. And that, that's what we went through in two thousand eighteen with the, with the water plant uh projects that we did, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So I just kind of put that table um um, as a visual in my report, so you can see what the process is. And um, the application's in place and we have a prequal, pre-qualification meeting set with C P H Es and C R F representatives on June twenty-ninth. So that's great. Enough about water, we'll go to streets. Hey, um, some stripes getting put down today, which is great.
That's a great. That's a great.
Did you say stripes look great?
Stripes are great. The painting on the road, the bike lanes.
Okay, yeah. That's okay. I, I couldn't hear very well. Um, double yellow's coming tomorrow. If some of them haven't been done today. And then we have a, one um strategic location that we'd like to um do some thermal inlays. And uh, we was fortunate enough to have a contractor in place that does both of those services for the town. Um, pothole and patching, um, gonna do some work on Thursday. Um, in a, in a few locations, not, not, not the big stuff for the uh, the paving that was approved at the last board meeting. But just some potholing on a couple of streets that, that are uh, need a bit. Um, downtown alleys, um, pretty, pretty excited about that um project. Um, we're looking at trying to do what we can with, with what we have in place in our downtown alleys. So um, focusing right now on the alley on the north side of Railroad Street to the north side of ma, of Colorado. And if we're able to be successful there, we're going to go ahead and start looking at the um, the other three alleys, I guess. Uh, both sides of Main Street from Railroad Street to Court Street. So um, something that I know has been a, a big frustration for our community and, and some of us as well. Um, we've torn up a bunch of, or not a lot of, but we have several locations where we've ripped some of the sidewalks out. Mostly due to tree damage right now. Apologize for not getting that put back together. We're just struggling. Um, we thought we had some time to do some things, like the uh C dot sidewalk project and, and some of our sidewalk replacement projects. Um, it's, it's just really tough when uh operations and, and things that are um kind of more prioritizing needs kind of pull us off. But we're, we're plugging away with that and hoping to have some, some new sidewalks put in. Um, hopefully, you know, throughout uh July, um, maybe June. We'll see how it goes. Oh, let's see, what else? Boy, I'm really giving you guys a lot. Um, I'll just go ahead and go to the, to the flyers. Um, we all know that the town's busy. We have some trash service things to fix. Um, oh, trying to do what we can to help um our, our, our critters that live here. And so working to get a, a couple dumpster locations uh to pick up times during the week. So we don't have overflowing trash in, in uh, in Columbine Park primarily. Um, but, but anyways, I dropped off the flyers that we put on the trash cans in several locations. And then the uh, the flyer for the voluntary water restrictions. Um, and uh, yeah, um, big thanks to everybody that helped out at the uh Collegiate Peak Stampede Rodeo. Um, it was quite the turnout Friday night. And um, that's, I'll wrap it up there.
Question for Sean. Comments?
Always. I hate to say it, Sean, when I glanced down and it says respect, respectfully submitted. I thought it said shamelessly. I did. I don't know why. It just caught me.
I like it. I like it.
You're a busy man. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Jack, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Um, my camera's not working right. I just get a big, I look like a big black blob or something, so. But uh, is the mic working? You're hearing me fine?
Great.
Good enough. Well, okay, staff report is on page thirty-four, thirty-five. Um, I'll be out of the office half of Friday and then, and again, Monday. Our specialist, Chandra, will be away at the end of July for a week, for holidays. Um, I don't know if I mentioned it before, but we are now on summer hours. So we're here from seven, seven in the morning to five in the evening, and that's seven days a week. The uh, couple of events coming up, uh, Slida has its airshow this weekend. Uh, it's a pretty good show they're going to have on. And next Wednesday, thirty, June, the Young Life fundraiser will be here at the airport. There's also a training opportunity, Tyler um, Albrecht, who is our um Air Advisor Board Secretary. He's also the president of the uh Chaffey County U A S Club. He's going to run a uh actual certified drone course. It's a part one oh seven. So he's looking to at least try and get five, five-plus students. Uh, in the packet, you'll see his contacts, email and phone number. And so if anybody's interested, we're looking about the second week of August to run in this and it probably will be conducted in the evening, Monday to Friday. Uh, all day Saturday and then with the exam on Sunday. And you can also give me a call if anybody's interested or has any other questions too. Um, other airport stuff. Uh, it was already mentioned that Mark Adonis is sort of in-between locations here. He's moving to Wyoming. So um, and you'll see a resolution come up a little bit later to move him from uh a regular member to the alternate. And his um, his time will uh, uh, December this year will be uh finished. So we're just going to let that run out. What else? So we've raised the fuel prices here at the airport. So we went from fi, four dollars fifty cents to four seventy-five on the one hundred low lead. And the jet, we went from five twenty to five fifty. Um, just like everything else, things are getting more and more expensive. So we're hoping that'll help uh uh, with our revenue. I'll come back to that too. Uh, you might have heard there was a plane crash uh a couple Mondays ago.
Oh, really?
We heard it come up on the uh Mayday on our radio. So we were able to talk to a couple pilots that were in the area and they found the down aircraft and the two people. The pilot and passenger walked away from it. Uh, we got ahold of a helicopter, happened to be flying there. He went in and picked them up and brought them back to our airport, whereupon they uh borrowed one of the cars and went to the hospital. So no major injuries. Um, I bring it up just in case somebody asks. Uh, the other thing, thing is they did not originate out of this airport. They didn't fly in or out, nor did they get fuel. So I think they originated either out of Eagle or Leadville. But anyway, everybody's fine on that. We are coordinating with Chaffey County Fire Department uh and, and uh BV to get some equipment, plus we're going to look at some training uh probably in the new year or later in the year with, with Chaffey County. Uh, when it comes like say hazmat stuff or maybe accidents out here. So we're going to do that. Uh, vehicles, we're doing all right. Everything seems to be running fine. Uh, we got a temporary fence put up from that accident. We're still waiting for an estimate on the full repair. Um, we've updated the airport business plan, which I expect to present that on the, what, thirteen July meeting? We'll, we'll present the uh airport business plan at that point. Oh, what else? So back to operations. Um, yeah, we seem to be doing quite well. This year, uh, like from um this time, May and uh last year, we're up quite a bit for so for example, aircraft jet traffic, we're up two hundred and thirty percent. Um, personnel using this airport up from last year, a hundred and eighty-six percent. Uh, we're up three hundred percent on aircraft over twelve thousand five hundred, which is, means the big jets. And that, you can see kind of reflects in our fuel report. We finally caught up and surpassed last year's year-to-date fuel. Uh, that's up over four hundred percent from this time last year. And we actually, I knew that twenty twenty was a little bit of a weird year, so we went back and checked two thousand nineteen. And we're pretty much on par with two thousand nineteen and even up on traffic as far as uh aircraft over twelve-five. Or we surpassed even twelve thousand or two thousand nineteen and we're just about even for two thousand nineteen on fuel. And you gotta mind, that was the year we were doing a lot of testing. So we have done no testing to date. This is just uh straight fuel sales from uh transit aircraft. That's all I have for you folks. If you have any questions.
Questions or comments for Jack?
I have a question.
Yes, Louie?
Um, Jack, it, I, I think I saw somewhere that you are evaluating the strength of the runways. And um, are these twelve thousand five hundred pound jets, th, those must be fine on our runways. Is that right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. We know, we're going to be in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three when we get our funding for uh apron rehab, that's when we're going to do a little more robust test. Right now, we, we're very uh conservative in what we put out as far as piles, like we can take Right now, we were very conservative in what we put out as far as pounds, like we can take on thirty-three thousand pounds of aircraft. But we know the runway can handle much more than that. So we want to test it and confirm it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jack? Thank you, Jack. Have a good night. First business item is the twenty twenty audit report. Treasurer Michelle Stoke will review with board the summary of the twenty twenty audit.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Did I turn myself on here?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. My report is on page thirty-six of the packet. And there, it is a stat- it is statutory that all municipalities must have an annual audit. We don't have a choice on that. That is something that we have to do. There are two possible outcomes. One is an unmodified opinion, which means that everything represents fairly based on their testing procedures and that there are no material misstatements in the, in the books. The second is modified opinion, and that can arise for a large variety of reasons, but generally means there's, there's an issue with the financial reporting of the entity. The audit starts on page thirty-eight. But I'd like, and it's also rig- is statutory that I have to present a management's discussion and analysis, which is on page forty of the packet. I write this every year. And however, my favorite part of this is page would be page forty-seven of the packet, which is the economic factors and financial outlook. If you are interested in, in, in how the town is doing, this management discussion and analysis, I refer to it as an M D N A, basically tells you where things changed, where they didn't, tries to give you reasons for the, what, what is possible reason for the change. But on this economic factors and financial outlook, I get to opine on what last year looked like, what this year is looking like, and what twenty twenty-two budget. I get to talk about what we're looking forward at. And that is probably, oh, I think it's, it's two pages at the end of the M D N A. And it really is probably the best part of that, that whole report when it comes to explaining in layman terms what's going on with the town. You can see it says some of the key budget considerations. We're already starting to look at twenty twenty-two based on twenty twenty-one. Employee health insurance is always going to be three to five and probably seven, up to seven percent increase. This year, it always is. Health insurance is just really expensive. The revenue forecast for twenty twenty-one was optimistic, but we only forecasted at three and a half percent for twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two will probably will remain as conservative. However, based on the first four months of twenty twenty-one, we're doing a lot better. We're doing a lot better than expected. And even in twenty twenty, we're doing better than expected. If you recall, a year ago, we had a meeting that we had put together a possible budget based on that we thought that we were going to lose lots and lots and lots of revenue and how we were going to cut back. And we're just, we're just, we were just presenting that, trying to be, do the responsible thing and having a plan in case things were, didn't turn out, in case things hadn't turned out the way they actually did. Twenty twenty was a very good year. And fund balances grew and expectations for the growth during twenty twenty-two. Having a decent amount of growth is not unreasonable. There are some issues. Inflation is starting to rear its ugly head. Now, I've been talking inflation to Philip for three years, I think. And he's been, he's been, yeah, yeah, I know it's coming. And we both have thought it, have thought it would, would have come sooner. But it is on the horizon now and even the federal, the Fed, the money board is, is talking about when they may, may end up raising rates. Fiscal sustainability issues. I want, you all know this, but we have three major components. Housing construction, the state prison, and summer tourism, of which summer tourism is probably keeps us the busiest. Although Mark would probably confirm that housing construction keeps him busy. They, the interest rates are still fairly low. But they pulled back on saying they weren't going to raise rates. The Fed wasn't going to raise rates until twenty twenty-four. And they said that perhaps they may start looking at raising rates in twenty twenty-three. I don't see any change in our, in our growth until, until rates start going up. Anyways, I will leave the rest of that for you to read. And, and then the independent auditors report, and then it just jumps right into the, the financial statements. And one of the big components of financial statements are analyzing the unfunded pension liabilities, which we do have some for police and firefighter pension association. And, and that gets analyzed and it takes up, used to take up four pages. Now it takes up probably a third of this report. So just trying, they're just trying to make sure that towns don't have unfunded liabilities that could cause them to go bankrupt because that's what happened to Illinois. So we're all doing good with that. We're doing good. Our, our, our net position or fund balance has gone up by about a million dollars. And I go into the possible reasons for that. And and then we're done with the audit. I'll be able to submit it to DOLA on the thirtieth, like, like I promised I would when you hired me. That wraps up my discussion on the audit. I would love to entertain questions on the audit because that would mean you read it. So any questions?
Question for Michelle.
Looks like a great job, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next item.
Mayor, may I?
What you have?
Do we need a motion to approve?
Report of just presentation.
Michelle, do you need any formal action by the board? I can't, I can't remember that.
Let's see.
Never hurts. It never hurts.
It never hurts. Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, it's really up to the board if you want to make a motion to accept it or you want to just acknowledge the report and move on.
We got it.
I didn't see a request for anything, so.
V O T action on the memo, trustee should make a motion to accept or reject the financial statements.
Is there one there?
There you go.
There it is.
I moved to accept the financial audit.
Hey, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a second further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X time?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Book?
Yes.
Thank you all very much and thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Ask Philip a question?
Yes.
On page forty-eight, it mentions town leaders are focused on defining the role of local government in our community and balancing limited resources with requests. I'm curious to hear more about that. If you want to talk about trustee staff or there was, if you were part of that kind of observation or.
I guess.
Yeah. Role of government.
That, that mostly points back to the strategic plan and the planning that is done and the workshops that the trustees do as far as their strategic plan and strategic their, their goals and, and stuff.
Yeah, I think it speaks to the ongoing role of the board looking at the overall picture. And that constant struggle of like, where do we get involved? Where do we not get involved? And we all have a finite number of resources. So I think it's speaking to that as opposed to town staff that has the role of managing all of, all of the rest of that stuff. Yeah. Yeah. Good question.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Local emergency declaration. An adoption of resolution number thirty, series twenty twenty-one, and entitled a resolution extending the declaration of a local disaster emergency in and for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Philip, do you want to lead with that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I don't want to make this more complicated. It needs to be, but I wanted to make sure the board had an opportunity to discuss and consider what it means to extend or not extend the local declaration, emergency declaration for the pandemic, which we've been under since March of last year. And it is set to expire the end of June, so it is that time to make a decision. And so in my memo, I just kind of outlined, you know, what, what it is, what we've been under for the last year and a little over a year. And considerations for why staff is recommending that we do continue. We extended essentially through the end of the year. And it really boils down to, while things are looking good in our county, and I think nationwide, we're seeing a positive trend when it comes to the pandemic. We're certainly not out of it completely. There could be further financial and other impacts to our community that could happen in the foreseeable future. Or there's the aspect of, we're still in the midst of, of working with recovery funding and grants and all sorts of things that are coming at the federal and state level. And we don't know what the terms and conditions necessarily will be on those. And so in speaking with town attorney Parker, he and I agreed that it would be safe to continue that declaration just to cover the town, just to cover in case there's any kind of requirement that we be in a local disaster declaration for, for any of that funding. It also allows us at a policy level to continue with some of the things we have done, such as the premise expansion. That's really in line with what the state's been doing. And so we try to stay cohesive with that and that's a bit up in the air. I think that's set, some of that's set to expire the end of July. So Paula is anxiously waiting to hear what they do at a state level. But, you know, again, it, it does help justify some of those policy decisions that the board has made to, to allow some of that to, to occur. So that is the recommendation that we, that we continue. The other part of this was just kind of the recognition of like, wow, things have changed. We have technology that allows for remote connection now, which is, I mean, you think about, we could barely do a conference call before COVID. I mean, that, that actually, we had a hard time pulling off. So, you know, kudos to Michael Hammond, especially for, for helping ramp a lot of that up. But it's changed our experience, right? So I think it was, it was, it was an opportunity to say, hey, we also have this policy that the board adopted during the pandemic or it was updated at the beginning of the pandemic. Just talking about when and how remote participation happens, especially at, at board level. We love the idea of utilizing Zoom for, for public and some staff and sometimes even for some board members. But this, this policy was in, in your packet for a refresher. And I would just highlight that there, there are some differences in that policy between when you're in a disaster and when you're not a local emergency. And, and, and even when we're not in a local emergency, a non-emergency situation, it still talks about allowing board members to participate remotely. But there's some nuances there where they can't participate in quasi judicial matters, for instance. Versus when we are in an emergency, it, it does allow that because we got to continue normal business, right? So I did want to let you put eyes on that. If you saw something that doesn't look quite right or needs further refinement, we can, we can delve into that as well. So two, two things. One, a decision on the resolution that is in the packet about extending the local disaster declaration. And then two, if there's any feedback on the board policy on remote participation.
Amy, you have a question?
Yes. Thanks for clarifying the no, non-quasi judicial and non-emergent. Perhaps when we go over our governance documents, maybe later in the year, we could revisit A, I think it's two A two. Maybe perhaps it says the board of trustees may by majority of vote declare a member's repeated use excessive. Maybe we could just set a number to that, maybe over twenty-five percent of the meetings or, or some number. When we look at our governance model, just so it's, I think that would just avoid any sort of issues in the future as well as when we look at our governance document, doing the same for an attendance hall. Something a little more firm, like serve future boards well. And then I know when I would move to approve resolution thirty, series twenty twenty-one. People have questions, though.
Was that a motion? You said approve.
Move to approve resolution thirty, twenty twenty-one, but I know people had questions first.
No, there's, there's a motion on the floor.
A second?
Second was who? I'm sorry. Devin? Thank you. Further discussion. And keep in mind, this does not, this is not restrictive, correct, Philip? The, the declaration.
Correct.
Is not restrictive in the respect that we can't do certain things. It just keeps us in that position to accept grants and.
That's right.
Forward with things like.
Right. It doesn't restrict us. That's right.
So we have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X time?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And trustee Book?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Philip.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the I G A. If, C dot, I was missing the W in it.
Maybe with.
I had a, I had a peanut. C dot for intersection at US twenty-four, Baylor and DePaul, adoption of resolution number thirty-one, series twenty twenty-one, entitled a resolution of the board of trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, approving an agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the design and construction of traffic signal on US Highway twenty-four at the intersection of DePaul Avenue and Baylor Drive. On U S Highway twenty four at the intersection of DePaul Avenue and Baylor Drive. Is that you, Joel?
It is. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, trustees. Um, wanted first, before I get into drawing your attention, there are two papers. One stapled, another on the table. Um, we couldn't get this to you until today, but one is uh. Just a little updated memo from the original memo that you got in your packet. And the other is the exhibit for this with with one change that I explained in the in the memo. So we'll be looking this evening for a motion like um mayor said to really to authorize um. Town administrator to sign this contract with C dot. Um, and there is an expenditure of sixty thousand dollars associated with it, which is a budgeted item. So um, the you guys, uh, you all remember in the fall of two thousand nineteen, we did a traffic warrant analysis. To take a look at the need for any kind of signal, traffic signal at the intersection of. Uh, Baylor and DePaul at U S Highway twenty four, which is at uh by the high school. Um, coming on the highway. Uh, we also looked at Steel Drive and then one other intersection, uh, traffic warrant analysis. And both of those intersections are deemed as needing a traffic signal. So C dot put it on their high priority list for the region, San Luis Valley region, region five. To put an intersection um at Baylor, DePaul and U S Highway twenty four. And so it's been in the plans. Um, the funding for that project was approved. Um, just this winter. Um, and so we've been kind of eyeing that because it's a pretty dangerous to try and turn left officially off of Baylor. Um, so we've got, you know, approval for funding and we have been planning on a pretty intricate uh. Kind of signal what to do there, you know, because of the the alignment of DePaul and Baylor is so uh. Awkward. Um, and uh, we've been anticipating a pretty hefty design, but they came back. Uh, we met with them last week with C dot and they came back last week with pretty easy design, uh, which is encouraging. And um, I think it is funded in their twenty four, twenty five budget. Um, with potential of getting some of that money earlier and twenty four, twenty five, they've got a weird. Uh, kind of budget cycle, so that's sort of twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Three even, it's a little weird, we don't understand it all, but it's coming up soon. So we've talent put in our budget sixty thousand dollars for the for design work and um. C dot thankfully is, they're taking the ball and running with this thing. And they're going to work with the railroad, negotiate railroad company. They're going to do the design work, all the heavy lifting, uh, like coordinate the design and stuff, essentially, and just give them. Give a check and then we're involved with feedback on the design and the signals that, you know, and. Timing of that kind of thing. Pedestrian crossing uh on the north side. Like on the north side of the intersection, so you can cross Highway twenty four, only the one pedestrian there. Um. And maybe sidewalks, potentially kind of going around the uh railroad track area linking to the high school. Um, so pretty exciting. So we're requesting um the. Were need to sign this contract. There was, we went back and forth. Kind of way with our legal team, there was a requested change that I had written in the original memo. And C dot's legal guy said, hey, we're not allowed to do that unless we get some super high permission. Um, and here's an alternative and town attorney Parker looked at that alternative, which is included uh here. Um, the bolden part and section five A, just adding a new sentence and. Um, on on page one of this memo, talking about the local agency and the funding potential and Jeff said, hey, this is. Okay. And.
It's exactly the same thing I did, just in a different place, so it's fine.
Yeah, just move this set. So he's um cool with it. And so we're requesting um. The authorization, you know, the the approval of re- the resolution thirty one as amended because of the contract exhibit. A is amended, so. Um, and roll call vote, if you should want to do it, I'll take care of the authorization. Thousand dollar expenditure.
Questions?
Now I'll make the motion to approve resolution number thirty one, twenty twenty one.
My second.
Second Faye. Further discussion?
Question.
Go ahead.
Um, this is for the design work, right?
The contract is uh, the sixty thousand contribution is for design work. Um, C dot will take care of the rest of it and the contract is for design and for construction or participation in in. In discussing the construction, if you will.
But not and actually carrying it out. I mean, do we have, do we have any idea how much we might be on the hook for?
Is it, they they've got what, three million, something?
They have to for three point three or three point four million from their funding sources. So we do not anticipate town having to contribute more than the sixty thousand.
And it isn't a huge, let me have them say huge project. You know what I'm saying? I mean, three million is a big project. Don't get me wrong, but uh, it's not like doing the highway corridor we did and all that kind of stuff.
Well, and originally there was talk about having to like, um, you know. Take people, buy people's land and rearrange things and move the whole railroad crossing and all sorts of things. And that that isn't going to be the case. So there might even be leftover for uh improvements at Steel Drive as well.
Which was, which would be cool if it happened.
Absolutely.
Um, now are they still tarking a kind of a parking lot in that area? Isn't that one thing they were kind of looking at?
We, they, we don't know, this isn't part of that conversation. They probably are, but that's kind of a different group.
Different deal. Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. Can I have roll call vote, please?
Trustee X time?
Yes.
Trustee P. Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
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 Thank you all very much. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Jeff, Philip? So good, so good. That's going to be really interesting. That's going to change the look of town.
Kind of slope. People down coming into town.
Believe me, I mean, that's. Yeah, that's not a bad.
It's gonna.
Not saying that in a bad way.
It's gonna be nice, is it's gonna.
People aren't cruising in or cruising out, you know?
Yeah, they don't start accelerating the the subway.
It's gonna make easier. They did share a very preliminary design with Joel, Mark and myself, very impressed and Sean, sorry, Sean, you too. Um, very impressed with with their ability to look at a very complex. Cause yeah, we were moving intersections and doing all sorts of stuff and they put together a plan that was like, wow, they captured.
Everything.
What makes sense from a pedestrian standpoint to how the cars flow through there and we were, we were pretty excited.
Great.
They brought forward.
Bikes, bikes can get across there, okay?
Uh, yeah, hopefully. I mean, now granted, crossing this highway is a challenge. And even with blinking lights and things like that, it's still far from perfect, but um, yeah. Playing Frogger or something, but yeah, it it was a well thought out flow for pedestrians and and for cars. So we were, we were pretty psyched about that.
What needed to be done for a long time.
Oh, yes.
Treacherous.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm not. I would have chosen that intersection before the north one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the location of it.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, I, well, and I think we all agree that that all came about when we were looking at annexing that. That property and they were going to do a division up there. And they said, oh, with that traffic, you're going to have to put in a light and that took precedent is really what it did. Remember when that was going on?
Yeah, it was a little, yeah.
It was messy. It was messy.
Yeah.
Somebody jumped in when they shouldn't.
Previous lives.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Uh, next item is trustee staff interaction. Paula? Uh, just anticipation, right? Thank you. Cindy?
I'm good.
Cindy's good. Sean?
Oh, well, let's see. I'm good.
I thought something new happened since you talked, you know, just just saying. Norm?
Just a question for Sean, what is going to happen to the? And old vehicles at the public works?
So um, more than likely, um. The bulk of them are likely to be um salvage, right? Metal recycling. Um, we probably have a handful of vehicles that we're planning to do some sealed bid offers for. Um, probably the the uh, the Impalas, the old police vehicles. Um, but most of the vehicles that are here are are beyond repair and and likely to have more value for for salvage opportunities. So we had been, we were hoping to get something going, um, you know, second quarter this year. Jay's doing an inventory for for that effort, but um, you know, as as busy as we are and, you know, I hate to be that guy that just keeps whining. We just, we're struggling for help and um, it's taken a pretty um, pretty strong effort to to do the things that we've. We've been able to do so far this year, but I'm optimistic that, you know, we we move forward. Michelle and I had had talked about that, Philip and I had talked about that as well coming into twenty twenty one and we're hoping to get it kind of kicked off earlier. But um, but yeah, um, the vehicles that are out back behind the bridges and, you know, we have um. Um, some, some pretty rough things back there, um, old trucks and um, an an old van. And and some stuff that, you know, came from the airport, um, you know, ten years ago. Uh, combine that with the the vehicles that came here from BB Fire for for practicing. I think, I think a salvage yard or a metal recycler would probably be um, probably interested in in. In purchasing that or bidding for it.
I was just thinking of a view for the new PD.
Okay.
Thanks, Norm. Thank you, Norm. Uh, Michelle, do you have anything there?
I'm good.
You're good. Thank you very much.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Amy, do you have something?
Sure, I'd love to follow up the conversation about the declaration of emergency and maybe just a affordable housing. Discussion about that, if you want to.
So staff direction, is that what we're looking for? More information from staff? Is that what you're implying?
Um, maybe not any direction, but just kind of, um, it seems like the group that maybe a community that. Put a state of emergency for affordable housing, they seem to have things in mind for what it would to be used for. I don't know if you picked up on that at all.
Uh huh.
Um, but I think the state, I can see how a state of emergency would be great to leverage, but you know, as the. As the housing board, as board member of the housing authority, I'd like to maybe try and set some goals that are just for the north end of the county. Um, I think a lot of the, I think the housing authority is great, but maybe I think we're very different than Salida. And I think it would be good for us to just have our own goals and um. You know, I think we probably have about thirty thousand allocated for affordable housing this year, give or take fifteen for the housing authority. And fifteen for what potentially be a a project by the ball fields. Uh, and I mean, I don't even think it's going to really scratch the surface, but um, there was a mention of finding additional revenue streams. In the budget report and I think for the housing that this community so desperately needs, it's going to take money. And I, I think it would be really helpful for us to consider a possible excise tax. Uh, for excise for our short term rentals in the north end of the county. So rather than regulating as a way to create units, we would have money to create units, which is. It's the one I've seen, that seems to be how workforce housing is developed. Um, and Philip, if you had anything to add on that or say I'm totally wrong or?
Well, I've uh kind of going back to what you started with, with that local emergency declaration, I absolutely agree. There needs to be a purpose. There needs to be a goal, there needs to be an intent of doing that, not just, hey, we're declaring an emergency. Hey, I'm bankrupt, you know, that doesn't solve your problems. So I think um, you know, in the instances where we've talked about, yeah, there there was a reason why they were doing it. Uh, they would, you know, they made the declaration that allowed them to do something. So they they had talked about what that something was. In the case of Crest Dubut, they're going to very gently. Try out a permitted camping on residential parcels specifically for workforce. That's displaced, very specific, very limited. Uh, uh, and they're exploring what the actual impact of that would be, positive, negative, that kind of thing. It's not allowing camping all through the town of Crest Dubut. And so, so yeah, they started with, here's what we'd like to do, the declaration helps us do that. Uh, and then their staff is developing the process and I'm actually giving them a little bit of our code for our uh licensing. Of camping in town uh, just as a collaboration, right? Cause you got to have a process around all that. So that was, that was Crest Dubut. Salida is looking at things like, hey, how, they've got a plethora of hotels, very different than the north end of the county. They've got a lot of hotel space down there. How could they possibly leverage that for immediate uh need for people that are being displaced? So I I would agree with that sentiment that it's probably worth the board saying, hey, here's what we would like to try or. Get empower the staff to go put a process together before just declaring an emergency. Absolutely.
And that's kind of the direction I was anticipating was, um, first of all, more information.
Hmm.
Um, just to, because when I first heard what they were doing, I'm going, no way. But then when you hear what they're doing instead of just the report, okay, I, you know, I think I could entertain that. And and it's because it's, it it's finite. They have a system set down, not just, hey, throw a tan anywhere and let's go. Um, now you bring up another subject, which is totally separate in my opinion. Okay, good. I'm glad you say that, because I've gone, wait a minute, we went from what we were talking about, emergency housing to all of a sudden now we're gonna. Wait, we're gonna do what? And I'm trying to separate the two. Uh, that would be my opinion, further discussion. A maybe. First I look at one, um. We have already asked staff to bring us something on S T Rs and you're talking about an excise tax possibly on S T Rs. Okay, so we'll have to have some legal presentation on that. Um, as to a direction like Jeff could give us a direction, how can we process if that's a direction the board wants to go? Okay, um, the other thing that I know we keep, we keep bringing up and keep stepping back and you actually mentioned it. Is we have chasing our housing authority. Um, I'd like to see them get their feet on the ground and maybe they can assist us with something, some kind of process there. Which could be totally separate from anybody else. Um, that's the direction I see there. I'm trying to prioritize. And I think possibly, I'm looking at the emergency declaration first. If we're going to look at doing possibly housing, some emergency housing, something in that respect and every area is different, obviously. Um, then we could, we still want to pursue what we talked about in the work session. Then maybe we can bounce back, Amy, if that makes sense and says.
Whenever, yeah.
You know, some kind of uh revenue stream is what you're talking about. How can we, how can we generate revenue for that? And that's, I mean, I think that point well taken. Yes, so first things first, that makes sense.
Uh huh.
And then we can always keep that and keep that on the radar.
I appreciate it.
Um, thank you, Amy. Uh, Libby?
This would be a much simpler thing than than uh the declaration. But uh, what about a dump station somewhere for campers? Um, so right now you have to go down to Pontchar Springs or or snowy peaks. You know, it just doesn't seem right that we should depend on on.
Were you listening to our staff meeting this morning? It was brought up, uh, that very thing. Yes, it was.
Know the COVID dollars?
Yeah, I, I, that obviously would be a uh, uh, collaboration or or really a thing with the sanitation.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it was, it was brought up and and I think something that probably we're checking in with them about.
And not the first time it's run, been brought up.
I've brought it up a few times.
And I know before you even on the board, it was questioned is like, you know, why can't we? And of course, now that we're looking, developing different. That changes that whole aspect out in front of public works, because there was sewer right there.
Got to be careful with, yeah, with how that's programmed.
There's a lot of people who work here in town who live in campers and have to deal with that, so.
Actually, even our local services have to go to Salida. They can't even do anything here. Kind of interesting.
Can't put it in the creek.
They don't put it in the creek, thank you very much. Pretty interesting sanitation.
You said it has to go down to Salida.
Sanitation, kind of hard to work with. But that's not us.
Special district.
Thank you. The town. Yeah, town does this, sanitation does that.
Yeah, it would definitely need to be a collaboration with sanitation, but yeah, we can. We could certainly look at it.
Good point, Libby.
Is it?
Yeah, keep us posted.
And it can't be like pumped out, it can't just be like a tank. It can't be, it has to be piped in.
I think for, I don't know enough about it, to be honest with you. I don't know the, the options around it. I think it would, we'd have to be very thoughtful where it goes. And yeah, if it's not connected into the system. I'd be worried about the impacts to the surrounding, whatever's around it.
Well, if you, even if you had a holding tank, just the expense.
Yeah.
Keeping it, keeping that functional. With who's dumping what? I think that's the biggest question. Who's dumping what? And, and if there's an argument, that's the argument. Who's dumping what?
Thank you. Is, because they used to have one of the Shell Station years ago.
Oh, out behind it.
Yeah. Is that what that is back there?
Why? Anybody know why he stopped?
Now I'm going to say it probably had to do with just personal preference, they just didn't want the people back there, that's my guess.
It wouldn't be very good right behind the taco vending. They have.
Yeah, having Cousin Eddie back there while you're ordering tacos.
See, that's why I like these meetings, you know, nothing gets missed.
Good, good point, we will, we'll, we'll at least talk with sanitation and see if it's even been on their radar as well. And wait.
Someone chat about a couple places. People have like a mobile thing?
Let's see. There are mobile RV dump station businesses FYI, so that could be something to explore.
Good, they do it in Moab, don't they? If you do outline camping, don't they have mobile guys to go and pump tanks right out of the RVs?
I've seen it like in campgrounds and.
I, I know they do, maybe it's not Moab, but it's some other areas, they go right to the trailer and pump them out.
I think our code enforcement, they did get a complaint that somebody had, did have a mobile. Service coming to an RV that was being used, so.
Gotcha.
I, I do believe that statement is true, so.
They are out, they are out there.
Yep.
They are out there. Principal Planner Doring.
Nothing for me at this point.
Thank you, Jack, do you have anything to add?
Um, just what, I don't know if I missed it, maybe I zoned out. Resolution 28, did you present that or did it get? Accepted? That's the, put Wayne Lee as a regular member and.
Yes.
It was approved and consent agenda, all good.
Okay, thanks, that's all I got.
Dave?
Got a few here. One, it sounds like the emergency declaration conversation is forthcoming, but it just seemed, when I, when I read. Title of the email that Philip shared about camping in town. It made me realize that. And to, hopefully it's time to revisit that station of. Involving the local campground owners. And then we talked about dump stations, there, there's just a bunch of relative. Tangents that, that I think our, our campground owners would be able to help us with as we. We talk about housing and camping as an option and in town and out of town and. Sorry, just a bunch of stream of consciousness thoughts there, and I realized that's coming, so I'll organize it better for the next time I talk about it.
We'll hope so.
Yeah, thanks. Should be used to it by now. Next one is regarding our work session tonight. I, I think that in light of the direction that we are providing, that I would like to make a motion to rescind the cap that we. Decided to initiate or to adopt last meeting incentive planning and zoning. So I would like to motion to remove that cap while we explore the direction that town has been, that staff has been given.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Second Nyberg, further discussion. Let's do real call, Paula.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay? No. Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rob?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher? No. Trustee Boki?
Yes.
Thank you, all the motion passes for two.
Okay, and the last one is, hopefully we can do trustee trustee interaction. Amy and I have been, I've been conversing a bit about a blog that you've been maintaining, and I'm wondering if you got clarification whether that is a tangent or a subject that. Legal or anybody has had an opinion on from the organization.
I have not heard from anyone, is there something you would like to bring up?
Um, I'd just like to ask if that's a common practice or a recommended practice. To have a, a, a community conversation, individual trustee. And, and my concern is that. An opinion is put out there, short-term rentals, for instance, or it will take anything, but it, it, it is a policy statement. That later could be revisited as a quasi judicial issue. I'm wondering if, if, if because you've made a public statement on a public forum. That might cause issue for us later on.
So legislative issue being talked about.
Policy issue drilling down to a quasi judicial issue, like a short-term rental, again, policy statement. If we have to make a decision on an individual short-term rental situation at a later date. And, and that's just an example, I, and I, again, not exactly formulated, but. Wondering if Jeff or Philip or anybody had, or Joel.
Oh, just. When I was a, and it's really for Jeff. Later, but when I was early trustee, because I had started a blog and I remember Dale Lang at the time and Carol Russell, they both were like, oh my God. Can't do, it was completely benign, you know, and, and just talking about policy stuff, but they were like. You can't be putting things out there because at some point someone might read it and then sue you or the town. And I didn't know, I didn't, I just said, all right, whatever, because I had other things to think about, but I don't know if there's any kind of legal standing or not. I mean, it's super.
So I, I don't have a lot of details as to what exactly we're, we're looking at here, but I mean, I think in general. You know, trustees have first amendment rights, they have a right to basically talk about public issues. And there's no real limitation upon how you do that. And you can do that person to person, you can do that via email, letters, you know, blog posting. I think that it's just a matter of being clear whether, you know, you're, you're speaking for yourself or you're speaking on behalf of the town. I think that ultimately it's, you know, just as long as you're clear, you're speaking on behalf of the town. It's generally okay, I think that there could be issues when there's like a specific issue that comes before the town. Like an approval of a development. You know, some kind of licensing issue, quasi judicial thing. I mean, what you say could possibly be used. To show bias or something like that, but I mean, it, it probably applies to any statements you make in public. They're just not in writing, recorded for history in the same way. So what I would say is, is that policy issues should be fine. You know, just be aware that, you know, if there's a specific application that is coming before the town, it's before the town. You know, no trustee should be basically issuing opinions on that, because that should be decided during the actual hearing. Um, I do think it's also important to recognize there is some nice new case law in the last couple of years. On like Facebook, social media sites of individual members of an elected body. And depending upon exactly how you're representing yourself and what you're saying. That could be like a public forum, for example, where you don't have complete control over what people say, how you can basically. I guess curate the discourse. There's a case involving President Trump. We tried to argue that his, I think it's his Facebook site or Twitter site was his own private site, and they said, no, you're the president. It's a public site, and when you have public sites, you have to follow certain public rules. So we could talk about that, but um. Some of this is kind of hypothetical, and, and there's a little bit of complexity here, but I think the general issue is, is that trustees want to communicate their. Policy stances and their concerns on issues, they're free to do so under the first amendment. You just got to be aware that if there's a quasi judicial matter coming before you, that there could be an issue. So I just. Recommend you, you think about what you say and how you post, and I'm always happy to discuss it. In more detail, I'm kind of just giving a broad overview here, because I don't know specifically how it's being used, what's being said, what's involved, but. I, I think it's generally okay.
You mentioned one example, I just couldn't hear you, Jeff, you said something, something, because that will come to hearing. What?
Oh, excellent, like if you basically say, for example, there's a specific development.
Okay, yeah. Legislative's good, like that's fine, standing, okay.
Right.
Supporting that is, Sursa has some good videos, I don't know if we, if you guys have seen, I imagine all those Sursa videos and stuff, but that goes along with what Jeff was saying too, what. You know, do you talk about the Walmart, or do you talk about? You know, I don't know, the legislative stuff, but it's a tricky thing and it's up to you.
So. Do you have any other questions on that?
No, that, that cleared it up, thank you, thank you both.
So where, it's actually meant to be a newsletter, so. Part of a goal I've set for this year is to just communicate with our constituents. And provide as much information as possible. And I do open newsletters by stating, this is my viewpoint, not that of town or trustees. You know, I'm, I'm working with a company to help me with it, because I don't want to do anything wrong, of course, but I also want to be effective. And really work on community engagement this year. So that's kind of a goal I've been setting for myself. It doesn't have much readership now, I'm kind of just working with a group to help me. And yeah, I look forward to sharing it with you guys, which would Jeff Parker be my question is, is there any issues with then? If it's legislative, other trustees can of course read that. And that's different than, that's acceptable as well, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 yeah, that's totally fine, the fact that other trustees have access to it, they can comment, you know, it's totally fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's all I've got, that's your thing, Dave.
Devin?
Yeah. With the workforce housing emergency. Topic, I definitely am in favor of exploring that more and looking into it more and learning more about it. Something that I was thinking about when you were talking about it was. Four or five years ago, when I was on the board previously, I remember speaking at an intergovernmental meeting about transportation. In the valley and it was kind of. Crickets, and I feel like transportation is a super important. Part that can be related to workforce housing and affordable housing. I spoke with the Lake County Commissioner then. And they, the mayor of Leadville about their, how is, about their transportation? Because all the workforce there goes to Summit Eagle. And just what they were doing and how it worked out and, and that kind of stuff. And it was super interesting to learn about, about that. And I think that's something that we should definitely keep in mind is transportation and how it's severely lacking in this valley. Another thing that I thought about was when I lived in Vermont, there was a, the city of Burlington would purchase land. Or purchase properties and lease the land, sell the building and would. For much cheaper and, and that would, was a way to help affordable housing. I don't know if that's something that. A town our size could do, but you know, if we're looking to expand and have workforce housing, if we're going to be. Aggressive on it, we could. Be, be aggressive and purchase some land and figure some things out. And. Another thing I had about just going off of the short-term rental discussion and. Restrictions on, on short-term rentals. You know, something I really always think about is, I'm here to help this town grow in a progressive way. You know, I respect what has been here before and I, I really want to be here to help bro to. To be an amazing community and. I really want to work to invest in building our community in a positive way. Whether that's with purchasing land, parks, trails, sidewalks, the ice rink. Rec things, I think there's a lot of ways that we can really improve our community and really make that awesome community feel that we all want. And I'm just excited to do more with that, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, Devin. I did see where there is three days a week, some kind of transportation going from Buick to Salida.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know why three days a week and then it wasn't regular in the, in the respect that throughout the day, it was like three or four times a day, it runs down there. So, you know, I guess that's, just throwing that out there, that it's, maybe that's the beginning.
Totally, and I've, I've talked to a lot of people over the years about it, and people have always been, been open to it. Just having maybe just one bus or shuttle go from like here to Nathrop to Salida and back and just loop. You know, and that could bring more business, you know, I don't go to Salida a ton. Because I don't want to drive all the way there and all the way back, but if there's a, like a nice shuttle or a train or. Limp or something, I don't know.
And there is a, you know, and I just know from my business, there's a good number of people that live here, work down there and vice versa.
Yeah, and Monarch has their bus to bring people from BB up to Monarch every day, so.
And the one other thing when it comes to. Land, obviously if we'd bought land five years ago, Joel. We could have, we could have developed right now. Right now buying land is way out there.
Right. I mean, the whole project you're talking about over by the, include your comments, right? Right.
Believe me, I don't discount that. We could have had 10 times that much land for the same amount of money right now, if we'd have done it quite a few years ago.
Would it could have?
But I never rule out the property that's off of Greg Drive. It is not close in, it's not in my backyard, it's not, you know, it's, but it's there and it's something that can be done and. Uh, yeah, it's going to cost us to get water there, it's going to cost to get sewer there, but it's our land. And it's something that we could, that can be considered by town to think about, you know? It's not the perfect, well, I can remember when this one came for sale down here. And, and I kind of argued it, as a matter of fact, I said, I'll buy it, because it was prime property. And then it turned out there was the whole project came about and swapping of land and all that kind of stuff. And because otherwise. For us to give away property down here that's in the penions, that's pretty crazy. Obviously that land out there is pretty much dry zone. But it's there and it's ours.
And if it's our land, then we can. Decide what we're going to do with it.
We can do different things there, it's a big piece of property.
A farm.
It's not pretty, but it's, no, not that, no, the one off of Greg Drive.
Oh, yeah. Does it land up there?
Other west.
There is.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right, right north of the rodeo.
Yeah, I didn't even know about that.
Right north of rodeo now.
Yeah, it was part of our land study with, yeah, and it sounds like it creeps south, that actually becomes somewhat contiguous with development.
As I recall. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It is, I mean, it's right there, and the way it's developing out there, it's right there. Doesn't, put it out of the realm of possibilities, I mean, it's something you never want to forget, because it is our land. So it's something we can play with.
Yeah.
Very good, though.
Good idea.
Good points, Devin. Joel?
Yeah, one quick item, just kind of to affirm for the public, would you all have heard the emails that we got? The grant for the new decorative lights on East Main, but all the way from Linderman and the library. We would follow me all the way to these out here, just replacing the old ones that we've been trying to replace forever. And so it's. we have to get the scope of work so that hopefully will come by next meeting for your authorization, but at some point we'll be coming to the board if maybe next meeting, but for a request for the grant match, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, and we have to match ten percent. However, because of the number of lights that we need to replace, we don't want to leave one old one, and so we're going to request fourteen percent match, so twenty one thousand dollars as a as a match. And maybe we can fudge a little bit with with Sangre and you know, because some are already need to be replaced and they have money to do that, so. Anyhow, so that'll be coming forward. There were seven businesses, including the Deer Hammer, thank you, Amy, and the library and the E D C and Chamber of Commerce, they all wrote letters of support, which helped push us over the edge to get that, so. Thanks to the public and everything.
So longer and we'll save money.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and they should be all LEDs and everything too, yeah, that's, I mean, a hundred fifty bucks, a thousand bucks for replacing those things.
Joel, if you got a pole and you've got a globe and inside the globe is a light bulb.
Yeah.
How much of that whole thing is being replaced?
The whole thing.
All of it. Everything.
All of it. That's a, that's a plan, maybe, maybe in some instances, we don't have to, but that's the plan.
So they all look alike.
They should.
That didn't sound promising. At least you can go every other one, right?
You're gonna have the one light bulb, so. Yeah.
There you go.
But we all want to look at it.
God, believe me, the stories we've heard about those lights.
Oh, man. It's a journey.
Yeah, so we're we're excited about the cooperative effort, though, for working with Sangre for getting this going.
Yeah.
Once we get the purchase order, it should be eight months and they'll be in, so they have promised good cooperation and.
Yes.
Can we get it done in a shorter amount of time?
It takes normally, it takes like forty five months to get a pole and a bulb, but in COVID, everything's delayed.
So. Everything.
Everything. So I'm hoping we can get it.
Everything's delayed.
Anyway, that's, thank you.
And I just wanted to touch on the Sangre de Cristo thing, and this is kind of an example, I had a citizen come up to me and ask what was going on with Sangre de Cristo, and I talked, talked to you about that a little bit, where they were testing light bulbs. And he goes, what's the deal? They're testing light bulbs. And I said, you know, sure. He said, oh, I know, talk to Sean, right? I said, that's right. I don't, we don't have anything to do with that. That's not our job to say, you're right, I'll take care of it.
I know, I say, do I look like an asphalt repairer?
Plain and simple. It's like versus cracks. Find out who they go to, and that's direct in that direction.
And also too, just worth noting, sometimes I imagine you get some feedback for, you know, sharing the burden of that feedback. I'm I'm happy to be available if sometimes they just want to be heard by maybe someone else to, I'm happy to step in for that and just be like, trustee will get back to you, I'm available for that. Share the background?
I I try to refrain from responding because I want staff to deal with it. It's not my job to kiss them and make up.
Yeah. It's, it all depends on the topic, right? It's, you know, policy level, you know, I wish that we painted all the houses, you know, purple in town. Cool, go talk to Amy. Love to talk to you about that. If it's actually something business operations, please get it to.
Well, before we start painting houses, can we get the light stud?
Yeah.
And and that brings us to Philip, do you have any more to add?
I do, we have the COVID vaccine bus from the state coming to back to town tomorrow. They were here last week at the high school. They will be parked at the, in the railroad parking lot tomorrow from ten to six. Taking walk ups and things like that, so great to have them back, so if you know of anybody that's still looking for.
Is it the single or the double?
Both. Because they're trying to capture with the Pfizer, the younger age group with it, but I think they have J and J as well. Single shot.
And there's still the two weekly meetings for COVID? One weekly meeting for COVID?
Uh, once a week. Yes. Yes, on Thursdays. That's it from me.
That's it from me. Jeff, did you have anything? I know you you said a mouthful tonight, I didn't know whether you wanted to add more.
No, no, I'm, I'll spare you all. Thanks for offering, though.
Alrighty, thank you, Jeff. And just a hair here. I I'm going to request that Administrator Puckett turn off his phone on Friday. I'm actually, I want you to keep your phone on, your personal phone. The town has extra phones you can carry during the day.
Yep.
And I want you to shut yours off. It's time that those people that call us or whomever they call Public Works, they call Rec Department, they call that department that's in charge of that problem. Philip does enough running. And I mentioned this once, and we both kind of laughed. I said, how many times do you think the administrator of Aurora gets a phone call? And we just laughed, never.
Never.
Well, you know, Philip needs to be immune to some of that on the weekend. And he puts in too much time. Stress is going to kill him, so I kind of hope he'll do that.
And John is doing a great job holding me accountable, and she's got a phone set up, so I'll be converting to a work phone for that reason. Yep.
And I did tell him to put call forward on, because I'll take care of him. I know I won't get calls, so I don't have to worry about it.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Philip. You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Good job. As is all of staff, and Philip mentioned in his memo. Our next item on the agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Devin.
Okay.
Second, Nyberg, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Night.